Good evening, everybody. And welcome to the Covington City Council Joint Study Session with our hardworking Planning Commission. And tonight, we are here to review the Planning Commission work, but before we get started with that, let's do introductions and we'll start with Christina and just go around the table.
Hello, everyone. I'm Christina Saltus, City Council.
David Cottle, Planning Commissioner.
Beth Porter, City Council.
Steve Bosson, Planning Commission.
Debbie Hartzog, City Council.
Stephanie Hunziger, Planning Commission.
Sean Smith, City Council.
Jeff Wagner, your Mayor.
Kenner Ensign, Planning Commission.
Jennifer Harja-Helson, City Council.
Kathy Foster, Planning Commission.
Kathy Herring, Assistant Associate Planner for the City.
Selena Lyons, Planning Director.
Regan Bulley, City Manager.
Krista Bates, City Clerk.
And do we have anybody online with us tonight?
Not tonight. Raj Manaliker, who's our other Commissioner, may be online with us. He had another meeting and he might jump on mid, midstream.
Okay.
As far as Commissioners go.
Okay.
Yeah.
And then I guess before we proceed, the normal legal term of in compliance with state law, City Council's special and regular meetings being held in a hybrid format with in-person, telephonic, and virtual options for public viewing and participation. With that, I'm going to turn it over to Kenner to start her meeting.
Sounds good. We do have some slides prepared.
We're going.
There we go. Okay.
Ready? Let's go to the next one here. Okay, so we are here to talk about a couple of things today. Mainly the items that we completed as a planning commission in 2024. Most of them, the council will already be familiar with, so we'll kind of peruse through them. The structure of the 2025 work plan as we know today, and some of the long-range planning and community development work after 2025, as well as some of the legislative updates that we are hearing whispers about in this session this year. So, all right. This is all of us, if you care to know when we lose our jobs. You can go to the next slide.
No, Kenner. I just want to point out there's a lot of 2025s.
Yeah. That's right. So what we worked on in 2024, a lot of it was around the comprehensive plan. I do want to draw your attention that we did submit that Puget Sound Regional Council by the end of 2024. When was our official deadline for that? Was it end of 24th? Okay, so we hit the deadline. And that was really the bulk of our work during, during last year. A bunch of different individual elements that we've talked about. The first one being related to a lot of the housing mandates coming forward. So the step housing, the middle housing, and then the ADUs, which we'll, we'll go into in-depth tonight. We did update the parks element and the associated studies. We had some public outreach and stakeholder interviews and plan reviews as part of the comp plan. We did a number of code amendments. One of the ones I think we talked about together was mobile food trucks, the SEPA exemption, critical area ordinance updates, and then the EV charging requirements. And then a number of different items for the climate action. So a lot of it was gap analysis last year. We did get the climate grant, which we'll talk a little bit about today as well. For those of you who don't remember, I think it was 410,000 from Commerce, mainly around policy and gap analysis. So coming up in 25, we have another pretty full, full year. I, I am relieved that a lot of the comp plan stuff is behind us, but now we're getting into the meat and potatoes of a lot of things we said we were going to do in that comp plan. So the housing mandates, again, surrounding middle housing, the ADUs, and some of the co-living, which I'm actually not familiar with that one. Selena, if you want.
Um, yeah, and definitely jump in here too, but they, there is a new house bill. And I do believe there is even a substitute bill potentially floating around where they're already making changes to this one about requiring co-living. So that's kind of like your dormitory-style co-living housing would be another required housing type to permit.
Yep. Got it. A lot of the mandates are going to be surrounding our downtown design standards to remove the housing barriers there. One of the things I did want to point out, I don't know if you can see the last column there with the possible legislative mandates. Some of the more interesting ones that stand out to me are the neighborhood commercial zones, which we can get into. Those are interesting and scary and cool and I don't know, hip and I don't know. Yeah, I'm all over the place on this one. It's like I like coffee, but I don't know if I want it right next to my.
We used to have neighborhood commercial.
We still have neighborhood community commercial zones, but the bill that's before, and I don't know if it made it out on Friday or not, so some of this I probably could update. But that one would basically just allow it in any neighborhood zone. So your existing residential zones, someone could take their single-family home and turn it into a neighborhood commercial type of use, separate of like a home walk, which we already allow. This would just make that more an option. We have advocated for like reducing city sizes, like a small city like Covington, or cities that already have neighborhood commercial, that are already doing that kind of level planning. I don't know where that is as of Friday, so more to come. But this is the third time this bill has taken a run at the state level. So I'm anticipating that there's going to be some version that comes out. I don't know what that will look like. More to come.
Yep. So some of the other code amendments we have planned are surrounding the battery energy storage systems or BES, the zoning for those, the shoreline master plan, including water enjoyment, as well as a critical area ordinance. When, when are we going over critical area?
This year.
This year. Do we?
June.
Okay, yeah. Excellent. As well as the, the capital facilities and in parks. So we did do an assessment of, I believe, our tree cover, our tree canopy. I think we studied like 6,000 trees for, for the health of that. A lot of it in the downtown core with the, the heat islands around all those parking lots down there. There's not a ton we can do because of the, the high mains voltage lines over, over the top. But we have noticed some degradation over time of some of the landscaping down there. So that'll be an interesting one for us to go tackle. I will say, based on our discussion last Thursday, though, with the climate stuff, based on the wedge tool that was shown to us by Casc- is that Cascadia Consultants? They say we're on track for all of the greenhouse gas emissions with our kind of business-as-usual plan, which includes all of our policy updates and following all the state laws that we have to. I, I don't know. I'm skeptical of that, but it is looking relatively, relatively good, at least for Covington. I don't think Puget Sound in general is in as good of a position as, as Covington is. Okay. All right. What else do you want to talk about, Selena?
Um, I'll just open it up if there's any questions. We moved through the work plan pretty fast and furious tonight because we have a lot to talk about in housing. And so we wanted to use most of our time for that. But definitely, if there's any questions or comments about the work plan, or you want us to go back to any slides, we've got a couple of minutes to do so.
When you talked about the tree canopy downstairs, downtown, with the businesses like the Safeway Shopping Center where they took out all their trees that were in parking lot. But that parking, that development was approved with those trees? Are they going to be required to put the trees back yet?
So that's a really great question, and that's something that we're going to maybe, we're, what we are going to start to look at that. So we did the tree canopy of the public trees, which I did a really quick at the summit about that. That's the 6,000 trees in our public that Dawn's team now can use to manage our, our asset of, of street trees. The heat island mitigation gap analysis, that's going to look at, one, where we, one, our landscaping codes haven't been updated since we incorporated. We've kind of picked at them, but like taking a sweeping look at that, how can we have better landscaping, robots, landscaping codes? The second thing that we're also missing is a compliance element, where if a developer comes in or a owner, they come in and they remove those trees. There isn't really a code compliance requirement. So that's something I think Regan's been, Regan and Jennifer have probably just been negotiating those individually. So we want to get something more like, keep your trees, keep your landscaping, right? And then the third part to this is that we just have a lot of parking lots that are under the power lines, and there's not, you can't put a building under there. And so I know CEDIS has been looking at like, what are some cool things we could do to those spaces or to make them more active or lively? So part of this gap analysis will just be looking at our code to identify like where we have gaps and what we need to fix. But then that gap analysis could parlay into code updates. It could parlay into like the CEDIS's work plan on downtown stuff. So because we didn't get the full funding, that 500,000, we only get to do the gap analysis of the heat island. So more to come on that. That, that project is starting now, and it'll be, like I said, just a gap. But it'll address me, those main three things.
Thank you.
Yeah, BPA has their easement requirements, and they're generally about 50 feet to 100-foot swaths underneath that. And they just have their federal regulations for, is like you can't do anything underneath those.
I back up to a BPA power line over in Remington, and we have an easement, they have an easement. We ease together. And we can grow trees as long as they're not over, I think, 15 feet, something like that. So I was actually wondering if, since we put in a few trees here and there, kind of buffer cars from hitting each other, and then they hit the tree instead. What if we took like a section that would be about the size of the middle of a roundabout, planted it right in the middle of the parking lot and grew stuff?
I, I think that's a little bit of what that gap analysis will tell us, because then we're, I mean, we're sitting where we've sat, we've also dealt with BPA where they've come in and they've identified light poles they wanted to re- remove. And we're like, those are, those are light poles, not trees. And then we've gotten into the argument about how tall those can be. So part of this gap analysis, I think, will help us understand like what will BPA let us do? One, what is our code need from a climate perspective? And then what is CEDIS? I think that, I think I could see CEDIS kind of taking the baton on this.
Couple of other questions we'll probably talk about some later on. So the best ordinance is coming up here soon, isn't it, May?
Yeah, so the, the, the moratorium is up in May, so we'll be bringing that back for an extension. We can do multiple six-months extensions as long as we've got a work plan, which will devise. One of the reasons we've been lagging on that is that there is, I don't know, like five or six energy bills right now. And we're just seeing where that lands. And then by the time those land in April, then we'll hopefully have our heads wrapped around what the outcome is, and then we can come back and have that more in the work plan. So I don't see that till later in the year. So we'll just maintain the moratorium. I anticipate you'll be adopting that a couple of times until that gets through council.
And it's not on the current, but in the future. You mentioned light poles. I'd be curious for us to do our light pollution survey. A lot of our streetlights are not hooded. There's simple fixes for, you want to let the light back down. Then we have capacity for our light pollution interactive. What things we can encourage, wire, drivers, like simple little cap on that.
Yeah, we can add that just as something even, this is like an item and an action item that comes out of the gap analysis, because obviously these things would need to be funded. I will let you know that the, also related to climate is the multimodal plan that's going to be coming out, and it's going to give you a little bit of a reverse indication of be like, where is there even lighting in the city versus unlighted areas? So we will have a, like a piece of that. But I get what you're saying. They're too different in the sense like it's going up versus not at all. But, but we'll have some data at least on that.
And I'd be curious, a constituent that I put along the value per opinion with my wife. She notes the lights going up on 60th, I think it is. They're just seeming more bright than other lights going up toward Kentwood. And she's like, can you guys get those turned down? I don't know what it is, but they're just a different type of light. And I'm like, look, I don't know if we even own them, but it's funny. It'd be interesting to see what type of lights we have and the intensity of each one. I bet they're not consistent.
Yes.
They are. Yeah.
The new LEDs, so they use light energy.
Yeah, they're great. It's just, I think they're, for some of us that get older, it's, it's.
They're not, yeah. And, and the thing is, is when you first put them in, they've got full intensity and they go down.
They're like a bug zapper.
Yeah. Anyway.
Good description.
Just something to think about.
And, and Sean, with the, with the cats that drip the light down, are you talking about retrofitting or just for new development?
I mean, ideally, yes. I'd love to retrofit every street light here, but you know. Going forward, I'd like to see, so we're going to get into this conversation later, but middle, missing middle in the housing. And one of the reasons I got on the council in talking, I never heard someone say I want more housing by accident. Not once has anyone ever said that. And the big thing is, between it, everyone's always said to the person, the town that I grew up in is still a light. And part of me is like, look, that's just the nature of the beast. But I also think sometimes we don't do enough to try and, if nothing else, manage how that development goes and doing things like putting caps on lights, requiring, you know, maybe defensive space around houses, those sorts of things. And I want to talk about some of that. But yeah, I think going forward, we need to be less would you and more you have. You gotta do these things. Quality of life is, you can tell people that's, you know, it's more and more difficult. And those little things like just a tiny green space makes a huge difference. I'm on a soapbox, I get off the second, I lived in San Francisco. You couldn't touch dirt when, for a long time, and it was solid concrete everywhere. There was a art display where they had a block that had not been developed, and they restored it to its native habitat. And it was like, it brought tears to my eyes. It was literally, and I'm sure most people didn't even know that. So just going to make a strong case for we are, I think we can be doing more to channel and shape future development.
I, I think what Selena's thinking is, we love that, but the state disagrees. Yeah, that's the hard part.
Yeah. Some of the like joy and delight of professions we take on.
Yeah, the only thing I have to, we have to pick our battles. We also, I think, sometimes, we, myself, we need to pick some battles. And we need to push back on some of these things. Like I said, everyone, but you can't, we're hearing from the public, you know, we just roll over on everything. And there might be some things where we don't want to roll over.
Or if we don't have to, maybe like putting caps on lights and making things better for like pollinators and nightlife and things like that. That's not, you know, that's going for the environmental benefit, so like.
And quality. You know words.
Poking a tree.
Yeah, exactly.
And just one thing. If I, if I can switch gears just a little bit to wrap it up. So one of the other items that's going to be added to the work plan, if this is at the will of the council, if it's at the will of the council, is we have a scenario where churches in Covington are adopted through what's called a conditional use permit. And where they are adopted in a conditional use permit, it really restricts their form, and it also limits their ability to redevelop, right? So they'll get a conditional use permit, and then the code says you can only increase your development area by 10%. So if a church comes in and wants to do an expansion, right, of any sort, then they can have that 10% right out of the gate. But if they go, if they maximize that and they want to add more to their church, then they have to come back through a conditional use permit. And so one of the items that staff had on our work plan was, okay, well, maybe we change that percentage. Maybe we go instead of 10%, it's a 30% or 40%. And then we thought about it more, and we were like, why are we having conditional use permits for churches anyways, right? We, we adopt now per all these mandates, all these other housing types and all these other uses outright, why churches, right? So we did some research, and really the best practice is one, we're calling them more like religious institutions, so it captures the larger. And then also, going back to just a permitted use. So they would be permitted in that zone, on that property, all the bulk dimensions that would require them under the CUP would still apply. And so what we wanted to do is to present to the council tonight, if you are all in agreeance that that's something that the Planning Commission can add to their work plan to study changing away churches as a conditional use permit. I will also add that the conditional use permit requires a hearing examiner decision versus an administrative decision. And so, right, it would, yes.
So why do we know what the history behind why we started out having them as a conditional use permit?
Well, we adopted King County's code, I will always tell you. But historically, conditional use permits have always been used as, I don't want to say exclusionary, but it does allow cities to be particular about where things go and why, right? And we did a crosswalk for the Planning Commission, which I can show if we have time at the end, where we looked at what those conditional use criteria are in general in Covington. One, they're very outdated and do not meet any of GMA's requirements as far as having quantitative requirements, right? It's all about neighborhood character and things we're not allowed to measure on anymore. And then going through and looking at all the code provisions and everything that you would require under that CUP is already a standardized code, right? So if you said environmental, you know, if there's an environmental impact, well, we have shoreline, we have critical areas, we have stormwater, right? Like everything crosswalks. And I will also say that under, under, this is a bigger, kind of more churches, but also bigger, is that the longer term too, is that ideally, we as cities are going to have to face what are actually conditional use permits and what are permitted outright because of different requirements under 5290 and the housing bills, and not using CUPs as shields anymore, basically.
So Selena, are, is it only the churches in Covington that are right now permitted under the conditional use permit?
In the residential zones, yeah. So that's really the criteria is churches in residential zones.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you. So could something like that make it easier for expansion of services to the community?
Yes. Yes. And, and there would be a secondary to this too, is that we're also, and I wrote a synopsis for Regan, I think he might have shared it with you, is because we are, you know, we're giving the dynamic changes of service needs. Churches right now, you know, like food banks are technically not something they can provide, right? There's some that are historically, but if another church wanted to provide that service, there's a couple other kind of social services that our religious institutions tend to pick up that would not be allowed. So we would also be looking at that ability for those secondary uses. Sometimes that's schooling, childcare, food banks.
Could be a senior center or something like.
Yes, yes, yes. No, we would be allowing that more outright. It would be outright, right?
So are you looking for consensus from council to move forward on that? Is there consensus to? I think that would be, you have consensus?
I think.
And we'll probably be looking at it the second, like the second half of the year, just.
I don't know why, I don't have anything on the list, but. I don't know how you're going to get done with it. Well, it's always, this is what we're working on, and this is where we're going. And that's what's nice about your work plan, is you're showing not just what's now, but going into the future.
Okay, my gosh, I think we can wrap each work plan, if there's anything the Commission want to add.
Selena gave us an example at the last Planning Commission, what an example of that church trying to expand. Could you maybe just relate that real quickly?
Yeah. Yeah, so the storehouse, I mean, at the end of the day, it's the storehouse wants to expand, and right now they can't. If they want to come in, they have to do a brand-new conditional use permit. It's, it's costly. It's, it's an additional layer versus just a regular commercial site development application. And they're, they've already maximized all their development potential under their existing CUP. And that really started the conversation about, let's remove some barriers, right? Particularly as we're just removing barriers to step housing, right? And we know that those partnerships are really valuable and important. So let's not make that harder.
And they, they tried to do this a couple of years ago, but they just couldn't get past the process, so.
And I was assuming your GM is partly that too.
They're all, they're, they're considered step housing.
Oh, they are.
So they are already permitted outright. Yeah.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Let's find who else we're limiting.
Right, just trying to remove barriers. Okay, Daphne and I are going to go through this pretty quick. We've got a handful of slides. It would be great if we could get through and then go back and answer questions. There was one question, I know the Commission would like to talk with the council tonight, and that's about setbacks. So you're going to hear me say those words, but no, we're going to come back to it. And that if there's anything that the Commission wants to also touch on, just write it down, and we'll hopefully get this wrapped up today. Our goal with this meeting is for the Planning Commission and the City Council to have conversations about this legislative requirement that's coming forward and the draft ordinance. They've already made a recommendation to the council on this, and we'll kind of wrap that up at the end, what that means. But our next step is to bring this back to the council for their approval. Well, one, we have to send it off to Commerce for a 60-day review, so we'll be bringing this back to the council in June. Right, April, sorry, April. And if we want more time, then we can bring it back in June. But our goal was to really utilize this time, because we've had to meet the June 30th deadline. And if we fail to meet that, then the state mandate model ordinance becomes our governing ordinance until such time we adopt our ordinance and have it approved by Commerce. So it's, it's a different, it's a different process than maybe we've experienced before. So I'm going to let Daphne start us off.
Okay. You kind of already gave me some points, but I'll just begin by explaining kind of why we are here today. In 2023, the Washington State Legislative passed House Bill 1110, also known as the Middle Housing Bill. It requires middle housing types in all residential districts. Cities must allow at least two housing units per lot. As Selena mentioned, we have until June 30th of 2025 to pass our own ordinance or else the state's ordinance goes into effect. As of right now, we're on that track to meet those deadlines. So what is middle housing? RCW defines middle housing as buildings that are compatible in scale, form, and character with single-family houses and contains two or more stacked, attached, or clustered homes, including duplexes, tri, four, five, six complexes, townhomes, stacked flats, courtyard apartments, and cottage housing. So that was the definition the RCW came up with. So before we even began some of the code amendment work, the city did a gap analysis of middle housing. And we found that Covington already allows middle housing within Covington. The only difference is how we define middle housing. So how the state defines certain definitions of middle housing was different. So that's something that we wanted to make sure that was relayed, and we were in compliance with the state.
And you can see that across walk there. We use the term multifamily, townhome, duplex, and then now they pulled those all out.
So now diving into the actual housing code amendments. So in your agenda packet tonight, we attached, I think it was attachment to Exhibit A, our, our red lines. So I'll just kind of go through each section that we updated. The first section that we updated was Chapter 1820, Definitions. So we updated the definitions to align with House Bill 1110. A lot of the definitions were required to be updated, so we just kind of copied and pasted into our code just to meet compliance. It also helped realign some of our codes as previously in the gap analysis. We, some of our definitions did it online, so some of them were added, and some of them were just reworded to be compliant with House Bill 1110. The second section that we updated was Chapter 1825, Permitted Use Tables. Under this, we allowed middle housing predominantly in, in single-family homes. And we ensure that middle housing types at a minimum, which is required by the RCW, RCW duplexes, stacked flats, cottage housing, and courtyard apartments are permitted. So we had to permit that outright. From then, we just modified some of the, you know, the definitions, clarified what a townhome says. I think that was one of the biggest issues that we had, even for our current planners trying to. Um, even for our current planners trying to understand what that would look like.
And then the next section, okay, you hear me, okay. So then the next section that we um had to recommend now is your density and dimensions, right? So our our codes are predominantly set up for single-family neighborhoods like we see today. And as you saw back in this slide, this is what's coming, right? So you're gonna have different styles and shapes of housing. And one thing under the middle housing bill is that you cannot treat any of these middle housing any differently than you would a single-family home. So what you do for one, you do for all, right? That includes your residential neighborhoods, your single-family standards. So we had to go back through and look at those density and dimensions. So one of the the fundamental requirements also is that. In every zone within the city, you have to allow at least two homes per unit or per per lot. Unless the zoning says you need to do more. Where you're really going to see a lot of this is in your R-one zones, those folks out there that are limited to one unit per acre. Um, they'll now be able to do, at least get a secondary home out there. And also, I believe we'll see a lot more of this on the east side of the city where you have a lot of those private access tracks. Um, private large lots on the east side of two hundred and fourth. Um, those folks out there might be able to do a little bit more with their property than what they could today. Um, one of the topics we're gonna talk about is that reducing interior setbacks. We're proposing a five-foot, it was previously seven and a half feet. We will talk about that at the end. I know that's gonna have a lot of, a lot of conversation. And then the other one was we um changed the base height. So right now, our code allows a base height of thirty-five feet. And under the middle housing model code, the provisions, when you look at the standard best practices. Middle housing, if you do a townhome, like a three-story townhome, you need at least forty to forty-five feet to make that requirement. And so the the model ordinance does recommend that we go up to that forty, forty-five. Our code had a provision already for forty-five feet for single-family homes in certain conditions. We just had then got rid of those certain conditions and adopted forty-five feet as the standard for all residential projects in Covington.
You have to clarify, and that's any residential.
Any residential, single-family, middle housing, because you cannot treat them different. So we'll come back, we'll come back to height. We also add in an exemption for rooftop decks. Because that's something that we're also getting a lot of requests from the industry about the ability to have rooftop decks. Um, as a rooftop amenity. We also made this. Um, no, there's like a, there's a, the building code calls it like an amenity space, so it'd be forty-five feet plus you would have like an extra five feet. For the staircase to come to the roof, roof. The building code really covers a lot of that. We just didn't account for it in our zoning. Um, we did also make this change in the mixed housing office zone. Um, because we talked about rooftop decks in our downtown for our residential. Um, multifamily, but we didn't have any, we didn't, the height wouldn't have allowed it, so we just made that quick correction. You'll see that in there. Okay, do you want me to do this one too? Okay, and then the next one that we did was, um, the other thing under middle housing is that you're not allowed to have any design review. Um, you can't have, you can, you can't say townhomes shall be different colors and have different articulations and rooftop pitches. We can't do that. If you're not doing it for single-family homes, you don't do it for middle housing. So the the shape and form of the middle housing will be what the industry or what the developer chooses to do. Um, so, and in the model ordinance, it says you have to state that clearly, so we actually just added. Middle housing and single-family housing is an administrative review, which means we'll just look at the building permit. We'll ensure it meets building and fire codes and then all the other bulk requirements of a site. Um, the other thing too, that's like, it looks like a huge change in the red line is the cottage housing. So we had a cottage cottage housing ordinance before because it was more restrictive than the single family. We can't do that. So we're repealing our cottage housing ordinance. We've adopted a new little section that talks about cottage housing, and there are a couple things in there that we can require because it's cottage housing, like. Courtyard amenities and things that are particular to cottage housing, and that goes the same for courtyard apartments. So where we did have some flexibility, we tried to provide enhanced bulk dimensions where it made sense. But otherwise, you can't be more restrictive than a single-family home. Let me just keep going, okay. Um, and then the other one is is our favorite on the commission is parking standards. So under um the model, under the the ordinance is that. You, you have to, we had to reduce our parking to match the housing types, so there is some best practices on that. Um, so you'll see those changes. But under the um middle housing ordinance, uh, so no off-street parking shall be required within one-half mile walking distance of a major transit stop. Covington does not meet that qualification yet. So you had to be on basically an ST, a sound transit route, or have a headway of fifteen minutes. Ours does not meet that today. The other thing too is you have the major transit stop. But also Covington's currently a tier-three city. But when we hit twenty-five thousand in population, we become a tier-two city. And that comes with a bunch of other bulk requirements that we have to apply. The commission talked about this and they're like, well, we might as well apply them now because we're at twenty-two thousand people. And so we've adopted those requirements. The other requirement is that you can only require a maximum of one off-street parking space per unit. On lots no greater than six thousand square feet. So that was a mandate, so you can only allow one parking spot per unit. Um, and then we won't have many, I believe, that are gonna be at the greater than six thousand square feet, to be honest with you. But that's the only time that you can require to. Um, and right now Covington's code requires two parking spaces for single-family residential regardless of lot size. So this would be a change for single-family. The other housing types that multifamily did have like a prorated parking based on the use, right? So like a townhome is not the same as a single family, so they would only require like one and a half stalls. Now they're only required one stall. Okay.
And and that could all change.
That, oh, thank you, Regan. Yeah, that that there is.
That bill has a lot of leg right now, so.
There is a bill right now that would standardize parking standards in the state, so you would have no say. Um, we would be required to say housing is X, commercial is X. I will say, and and working with Lake Point particularly. Is this came up, we were looking at their overall site plan and their parking and their garage structure. Because they don't have a lot of like, they don't, some of their driveways are very short. And um, they understood, they, they're like, we understand the market here. We're always gonna provide at least two spaces, whether that's a garage tandem or two garage spaces. Now, we all know people behave different than how their home is built. But I say that because the builders that understand this will still likely provide more than one stall, right? If they're savvy and understand the market. But that's gonna be their determination, right? So you're a little bit of a faith in that, that this won't be horrible. But I will just say, the prolonged outcome is that at some point, the city is gonna probably have to consider parking management. As this evolves, not next year.
We have been working on a a population threshold that would keep Covington under that, but we don't know if that'll be amended yet.
Okay, so I'm gonna keep cruising through this. So accessory dwelling units, this was also another mandate. So HB thirteen-thirty-seven was also adopted in twenty-three. And this required that every city has to allow two ADUs per lot, any any configuration permitted outright. So that means one detached, one, if there's pictures here, I won't go through them all, but basically one attached ADU, one detached. You could have two attached, you could have two detached. They must be at least a thousand square feet minimum, so you can't lower that threshold. Um, it simplifies the parking requirements and then removes owner occupancy, and then they have to be allowed for sale or rent. So, and for those of you that are familiar, accessory dwelling units are kind of what we would call like mother-in-laws is another term for them. Um, they're smaller residents um that are on the lot of the primary dwelling. They're self-contained. They have a kitchen, bathroom, living, sleeping areas. So this is, again, I'm gonna run through this pretty quick. So over here, you have what's in the mandate, what's in our existing code and the proposed code update. So um, there was a lot of definitions that came out of the bill, so we updated those. Permitted zones, this is where actually Covington was in a good spot. We already allowed ADUs in all of our residential zones. So we didn't need, we're not going back and reassessing, like, should we allow them here or should we allow them there? Those were already outright. We only did allow one unit per lot, and now we have to allow the two. The size was already a thousand square feet, so we're not changing that. And we have the exception for the basement or attic where they could be larger. So, so really, those are no change there. The height, our minimum, our maximum height was thirty-five feet. We already allowed thirty-five feet for an accessory dwelling unit. We're keeping that the same. Parking, this is different. So our code would say, if you wanted an ADU, you needed one additional off-street parking space required. That was generally okay to do because you had a garage that allowed two, and then your part, and then your your driveway technically allows is two spots, right? Um, under this, the first ADU that goes in, there'll be no additional parking required. But if you come in for the second one, then you would need a parking stall. Part of the reason for this is that removes a barrier if someone wanted just to build one in their backyard for their mother, cousin, whomever. And then they would be able just to use their existing parking spaces, but if they built that second, they need to figure that out. So, so that is, that is a revision.
We're not asking questions till the end.
Sorry, folks. This is how it's gonna feel until June. Then we're gonna start it again. And then the occupancy, right now, we require that either the ADU or the home has to be owner occupied. The state says you can't do that. They could both be rentals, you could sell one of them. Um, so the property. So we removed that requirement, basically. Um, permit needed, there's nothing specified in that. We've always done these through a building permit across the counter. Um, that's no change. Something the commission did talk about, which a lot of cities are starting to get momentum on, is doing pre-approved ADU plans. Where we would have a list of like, here, these four plans are already pre-approved. If you pick from here, your permit goes quicker. Um, Kirkland has that, Renton is setting up a program. Maple Valley is working with Renton on maybe just kind of borrowing their plans. And I've been talking with Maple Valley about what that might look like, so there's some synergy. Lower on our work plan, it's a, it's a big lift, but um that would be our long-term goal, is to have some pre-approved ADU plans. And then again, the design requirements and setbacks. Um, you can't restrict these, um, and um, they would align with the setbacks decided for the property, the underlying property. So this is a little bit of, of, this picture speaks a thousand words. There is some discrepancies between the various house bills that were, that were there. One of the things was, in one of the bills, it said that ADUs may be considered part of HB ten-eleven-ten is the second permitted unit. So you would be allowed, instead of two single-family homes, you would have a single-family home and an ADU. We didn't really go that route because there wasn't a lot of cities that decided to try to unpack that. You know, that that discrepancy, and it's not really clear, and since cities are getting judged on HB eleven-ten. A lot of us are like, just meet the letter of the law and and move along, so. But it does provide some homeowner's flexibility, so it would allow. It would allow a homeowner like in the R-one to do two units, or they could do one unit and two ADUs. They could do a duplex and two ADUs, so this is a little bit of what that could potentially unfold. Um, and then I'll just add here the lot splitting bill. So one of the questions that came up with the commission was the owner occupancy, like, how does that become a thing? How do you own, how do you own your ADU? Well, there's a bill right now, there's two different versions about lot splitting that would then require cities to permit outright anybody who wants to divide their property. In half. So you could do, you could come in for your ADU, the lot splitting splitting bill becomes a reality. Then they come in, cities adopt that, so they just subdivided their lot. Permit it outright. Now, the utilities, I will say, we're working with sewer and water. We're gonna come back after all of this. Is adopted and untangle a few things, and that's sewer and water. Um, we're working with those districts right now because they're also responding to this. So they have, right now, if you did an ADU, you could do a side sewer or a side connection. But because of this owner occupancy selling ability. They're looking at like, you can't have a meter for another property on one house and then sell the other house. So either at the time of sale, there's a retro, or if a developer or homeowner was smart, they would set that up early. So more to unpack. For us, it's just the two lots, there are the two ADUs. So, but we'll be coming back with ancillary code amendments based on our friends at the Water and Sewer District. Okay, and the last one, I'm almost done. Okay, electric vehicle charging infrastructure. This is a little off-kilter, but because we were already opening parking for all of this. This was a good time for us to clean this up. So back in the early two thousands, cities were mandated to have electrical vehicle charging infrastructure codes and laws. And in the last legislative update in twenty, the twenty-twenty-one building codes, which were adopted in twenty-twenty-three. They took that away from the local planning jurisdictions and they put that into the building code council. So everything that cities had related to electrical vehicle charging stations, how many you had to provide. Connections, all of that detail is now in the international building codes. So what we're doing here is we are repealing all of our outdated EV regulations and just cross-referencing to the building codes. What you see here is how that works, okay? So there's different group occupancies, those are your group types, so that's your commercials, your warehousing, there's like a whole list of A through S. R is residential. There's, there's residential, like, single-family, and then there's other R groups, which are like your assisted livings or your multifamilies. Basically, the gist here is that for our commercial properties, so this really applies to our downtown zones. And likely, Lake Point, because it's a building code. Um, is that ten percent of your spaces, your total spaces provided, have to be EV charging stations. Everything in, right? The second one is that ten percent of your spaces have to be ready. So that's all the infrastructure, just not the actual charging capability. And then another ten percent have to be capable spaces, meaning in the future you can expand into those. The building code says you can park in that ten percent of capable, but the other ones generally reserved um for EV. Well, I'm sorry, the last two, EV-ready and capable, yeah. So I gave a little example of what that would look like. So if you had a business office with forty parking stalls. Both stalls would be EV infrastructure related. And then all the things on top of that, ADA accessibility, accessible routes, you know, all that good stuff. Okay, we're gonna come back to that. So I'm gonna pause there and we can go back to any slide that you've seen so far, if there's something.
So we'll go around the table. I do have one question because it is, what, six fifty already?
Yeah, you can do this quick, we got this.
And if we, this meeting always runs short of time. An hour and a half would be better. Are we allowed to run this long and start the council meeting late?
Well, because, because the meeting's noticed for seven, they probably need to start on time.
Joe, you got a question?
I found it in the packet, which, by the way, typing in accessory dwelling unit in the church took two minutes to find all of the things in there. Because this packet's so large, just stating that. Has the state seen the size of the lots that houses are being built? Backyards and side yards don't even have a thousand square feet to put an ADU on if they're requiring two. My house can't fit two of those and I have a larger lot than most, so I'm trying to figure out where they came up with this.
Um, a thousand square feet has always been an industry standard for ADUs, so when cities did these updates a long time ago, a thousand square feet was already on the books for most cities. I will tell you, this will not apply to existing HOAs with CCNRs that would restrict that. And um, it only applies to new developments, so any new developments with a CCNR cannot prohibit these, okay? Um, and yes, we made this argument during the bill discussion. Covington has had one ADU since incorporation that has been legally applied for. That's not to say they don't exist. Legally applied for, so low, low impact, I think, for us in the long term with these ADUs. Did you wanna add to that? Okay. Did you want to add to that? Okay.
Christina.
Um, make this make sense for me. Right now, and then by the way, that's allowed and not required. Um, right now. Any lot. Any single family resident lot can have cottages on them. And four flexes.
Correct. Okay, I'm done. Now, again, I'm going to, I'm going to share, I'm going to share with you, 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 we have to remember, and I should probably have put up a picture here. And it's in the packet. A lot of Covington has already developed in HOAs, right? And so what we're talking about, where you're going to really maybe see this change, is that. That's what's left, right? We have about a hundred acres, I think, left of development. And, and if. And unless the state makes a different statement about HOAs in the future. Because right now they, they did not take that. Thank you for my six seconds.
But.
I have a bunch of questions. I'm just going to do one, and I'll email rest. Tagging on an HOA, if it is not an active HOA, but it was applied for as an HOA, does that count?
So how this works at the end of the day with an HOA. Is the city does not implement CCNR, so you could come to me with an active HOA. I don't care. You want to apply for a triplex on your lot, I'm going to take you through the process and I'm going to give you a permit. What's going to happen, though, is your neighbors in that HOA who you have a contract or agreement with, they're the ones that were going to come after you. The city will not regulate your CCNRs. So you could come in and apply for, tear your single family home down and build a triplex if you wanted. We're going to permit that. I'm not going to say, go talk to you, I mean, I might say, go check with your HOA. But we are not the gatekeepers of any CCNRs. Okay, yeah.
Okay.
Okay, so you're saying the CCNRs trump the, sorry about that word.
Yes.
Uh, the states.
Potentially, yeah.
Okay, for right now.
There's something in the CCNRs, because right now we know a lot of CCNRs say you can't do an expansion, you can't add to your house, you can't do an ADU, you can't tear it down without our design group.
Right.
All of that. That, okay, those are all private contracts. So like the city, like I said, I would still give you the permit. And then your, your neighborhood would take you.
Okay, great, thank you. That's it.
No, no, you do. Jennifer.
I'm good.
So I was, I'll take Jennifer's time. I'm just going to do the same thing. I'll send you mine.
Okay.
Uh. But it's just, it's just interesting. Parking spaces and stuff like that, that. Setting aside more for EV, but then restricting to others, so. I'll ask with that parking management, that could, parking stickers maybe at some point in the.
Potentially.
Yeah, I mean, I think we need to think about that, especially if they're not going to require a new transit. You could have everyone parking on our city streets, and that's not.
Yeah, and we can't make our streets wider, you know.
I'll need to, I want to, I want to get back to, uh. The infrastructure facility in this, so we're now. Splitting these lots and making more impervious surfaces, so you're going to have more stormwater to manage. And that, again, I don't. There's only so much you can do. Eventually, the balloon is going to burst, and we're not thinking about the stormwater runoff. The fire that needs to be, my God, we had, you know, a huge section of Los Angeles burned to the ground, doesn't seem, or it was going to burn. You know, so I'm just saying, this is all fine and dainty. But the infrastructure, especially in established. Neighborhoods now, it's not there. I'm glad you could hear you talking about it. But this is something I would say going forward. We put on every lot, say, every, every new facility, we'll treat them all the same, has to have hookups for. Three, at least three facilities. You've got to do it. You can't, we can't come back later and retrofit. So that's something I would push back on, saying. New development. Got to have hookups with multiple families. You start.
We can look into that, but I would say there's a nexus of proportionality law that will keep us from doing that.
Well, let's push it to.
Yeah, unless you guys. So, so one thing that I, oh, sorry, mayor, I didn't mean to cut you off.
No, you're fine.
Okay, I've got, I got. The lot lines? Yeah, that's what I want to get to really quick, if that's okay. So I had a little bit of a presentation, and I'll send this out, but. Right now, one of the things that the, the commission was all aligned with everything that we have right now, because a lot of it, we don't get a say, right? We have to do it, where there's not a little wiggle room. Where there was, Daphne and I presented it, and one of those is setbacks. And when we originally brought this to the commission, we were reducing our seven and a half foot interior setbacks, so side and rears down to five feet. That was a recommendation in the model ordinance. It's not a shell, it's a May. And some of that here I've listed of like the pros, you know, the key benefits, the points of concern. Um, and, you know, what, what those rear setbacks can offset and do. So there's, there's a symbiotic relationship there. Um, some of our concern from planning was that if we kept it at seven and a half feet, would that get triggered by Commerce's review as a. An impediment to middle housing, okay? So we talked to the commission about this really great conversation on Thursday. They said, let's talk to the council. I've had a little bit of time to reflect on this. Um, and we came up with kind of three ideas that, that Daphne and I've talked about. We could just retain our seven and a half foot interior setback and see what happens, right? So we send the model ordinance off with seven and a half feet. And if it gets through Commerce, great. Um, the next one would be in five years, King County will audit our housing codes. And then if they see that we're not meeting our housing targets, they will tell us what we need to change. So there could be, we'd just be kicking a can potentially.
Just to add, it is an easy change if, if we're told we need to do that.
Right. The second one was just go five feet and let the industry decide, right? And I overhear you have these, these, these conversations, which touches a little bit. Um, on Councilmember Smith's comments is that there's a myriad of other requirements that apply to development when it happens, right? We're, we're looking at, what's your tree code, right? Where's your trees going to go? What's your stormwater size? They have to, a developer doesn't just come in and start with the number of lots. They have to determine that, and then they work back to determine their buildable area. That determines how many lots they actually get. So we look at all of that, stormwater infrastructure constraints. Pretty soon, we're going to have an urban wildlife wildfire requirement. We're going to have the tree code, which already requires retainment of trees. So these developers are going to have to get creative, right? So we could technically give them five, and then they're going to have to figure it out, right? Or we do what some of the other cities have done. Where they have gone to the five-foot setback, but they've retained a rear setback. And here it would be our suggestion to retain like a seven and a half foot setback. Um. As an option. And so I think what we're looking for is maybe a minute conversation about this. But the commission recommended approval to the, or recommended adoption of this ordinance to the council. It would be the council's discretion at the time of your adoption to make the final decision on the setback. Um, what you want to do. So if you want to go to five or state seven and a half, then we'll prep it or do that modification.
Well, we all didn't agree on five.
We all, they all did not agree on.
I disagreed on five. I went seven and a half, because I cannot imagine, and especially looking at the back of your house and seeing someone else's house right there. I mean, and it's just ridiculous, I think, to have them ten feet apart, because you've got five and five. It's just, it's too much.
Especially with the forty-five tall now. Imagine standing ten feet, forty-five, forty-five. It's.
We need to make a decision tonight, or can we talk about?
We can, we can bring this particular topic back to the council.
Yes, please.
Okay. Perfect.
One minute is not enough to discuss this.
With your, but you're going to send up those slides of, yeah, yeah, slides.
Yeah, and then can I just ask really quick before we wrap up? If, so the commission, I think we all were aligned verbally that they. They adopted it as presented with the five feet. They wanted the council to decide on the seven and a half, right? So staff will bring this back to the council as is. How would you like us to show that setback? Do you want to start with the seven and a half, or do you want us to leave it blank?
So clarification. Planning Commission is recommending. Majority, not a hundred percent. Five foot on all three, or five foot on the sides.
Five foot on all three. The interior setback.
So you can bring it to us, and then we can discuss it.
Discuss these three options?
Yes, the three options. So bring it to with what Planning Commission's recommendation is. And then we can discuss it with those three options there.
Okay. Does that sit well with the Planning Commission?
No. No, I just, I can't imagine living in that neighborhood. I couldn't live in that neighborhood.
Back to the council with those three options.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But I, I just, I, yeah.
So.
It, it's, it's making us the same as like living in Seattle or some other, where you've got to pack as many houses in as you possibly can. And I just think that's disgusting. I think that's a horrible way to live. Horrible.
Here, well, I'm sure there's going to be a lot of discussion around that.
So, mayor, can I also suggest that, that, um, the other council members give us their questions, and we can bring that back as part of our.
If you have any other questions, please email them to Selena.
Yep.
It's seven o'clock.
Thank you all.
Um, again, thank you, Planning Commission, for everything. I'm sorry we ran out of time. Next time, Selena.
Make it longer.
Can we please do an hour and a half?
Yes, of course.
Because we always run out of time.
Seriously. Yeah.
Okay.
Noted.
All right, this council study session is adjourned, and our council meeting will start in five.